The time is now five thirty-two. And welcome to the October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee Meeting. I am Zakiya Goins-McKens, Committee Chair and District Eight Board Member. It brings me great pleasure to welcome everyone to our meeting tonight. For those unable to observe now, this meeting is being recorded and will be available for later viewing on our PG CPS YouTube channel. Ms. Conley, please call the roll.
Ms. Goins-McKens?
Present.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
I'm sorry if I get your last name incorrect. Ms. Ajake?
Present.
Ajikai.
Ajikai, thank you. Dr. Anderfo?
Present.
Ms. Walker? And? Dr. Jackson? All right. And one, two, three. Four, we have four board members present.
Thank you so much, Ms. Conley. With a quorum present, the Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee Meeting will come to order. If there are no objections, the committee shall adopt the October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting agenda. Seeing none? If there are no corrections, the June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes shall be approved as distributed. Actually, give me one second. We're not approving June. We are approving September. Let's have to remake that motion. Give me a moment. And of course, now it won't load. Does one of our board staff members have the date for our last meeting? Page is not reloading for me.
September seventeenth.
Thank you so much, Dr. Coleman. So if there are no corrections, the September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes shall be approved as distributed. Seeing none. We will move on to public comment. We received no public comments for this meeting, either live or written. And so with that, we will turn it over to our Department of Capital Programs Summer Project Review. And so the chair recognizes Dr. Coleman, our chief operationer, for the DCP Summer Project Review.
Thank you, Board Committee Chair Goins-McKens, members of the board and community stakeholders. At this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over to our Department of Capital Programs team headed by Director Shayla Jackson to provide an update about our summer projects completed this past year.
There you go. Can you hear me? And can you see it?
Yes, ma'am. We're good to go on both.
Okay, great. Good evening, Committee Chair Goins-McKens and board members. We are happy to quickly go over some construction updates with you. Since I have not personally managed a project in ten years with PG CPS, and I don't want to embarrass myself if the questions get too specific, I have invited two of our senior project managers. The first one is Mr. Joseph Howell. I think he's been with us now ten years. He's delivered some major wins for us, so he'll go over the major projects. And Mr. Ricardo Garcia, I think, is about half that time with five years, but he is a heavy hitter and a professional obstacle mover, so he'll be covering our summer projects.
Okay, I'll get started. Cool Spring Adelphi Replacement Facility, the target delivery date is twenty twenty-nine. High Point High School Replacement Facility, that target delivery date is twenty thirty-one. New Northern Adelphi Area High School, that target delivery date is twenty thirty-three. Any questions on the next slide? Okay. Sutland High School, currently, we're forty-nine percent complete. The pictures reflect the recent site activities. Phase one, the comprehensive area of the high school is slated for delivery in January twenty twenty-six, with the auditorium April twenty twenty-six. Phase two, CBPA, that delivery is scheduled for Sept- September of twenty twenty-eight. And the phase three athletic complex, that delivery is scheduled for August of twenty twenty-seven. William Schmidt Outdoor Educational Center, that is also currently in construction, that is roughly, excuse me, that is scheduled for, that's right now, twenty-nine percent complete. The ten, the occupancy is scheduled for August of twenty twenty-six. William Word Middle School, that is also, the new school is done, but we in the process of demo and some other items to fill, major parking lot and so forth, so that construction is eighty-five percent complete, however, phase one was completed in August of twenty twenty-four. Phase two was completed in May of twenty twenty-five. And phases three and four were completed summer of twenty twenty-six.
I'll take over from here. Like, thank you Shayla for the introduction real quick. Thank you and to the board for having us. This is my first time meeting some of you, and I'm really, really excited. We had a fun summer, about fifty-five projects in construction we had over the summer. About, I would say ninety-five percent of these projects are finished with the exception some, some athletics improvements that they're currently ongoing. So we have twenty-eight systemic replacement upgrades, a building repair projects, five co-corrections, abatement, ADA updates. We have kitchen renovations, we have three playgrounds, five athletic improvement, and three new schools and modernizations. We, we hit the target. There were some hiccups that we were able to manage and solved. And by the end of the summer, as all of the construction summer project has been, they're either occupied, they're ongoing, and no, no issues were reported. So it was overall a fun summer. Any questions?
Thank you so much for that presentation. I already see one board member has her hand up, so we will jump right in. Board Member Walker?
Hi there. Thank you for the presentation. I have two questions. The first is, I just wanted to reconfirm that the monies for these projects are guaranteed. I guess what I'm looking for is with the, just money at a shortage right now, do we have any risk by way of funding? That's the first question. And then the second piece is, should we be also seeing the updates for the Brandywine Area Academy on this type of presentation? Or is that different? Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Board Member Walker. So let me answer the second one first because it's easier for me. Since that is a P three project, those updates usually come from OAIPD. We do try on our website to make sure it's linked, so the public doesn't have to know who's doing a project to get an update. So if you go to the major projects, it is there, and it's easily accessed. For the first question, though, we, we can't say that we have guaranteed funding. If some of the worst-case scenarios happen either to our budgets or to availability of bond sales, we, we could be in jeopardy, especially on the out-year projects. Right now, what's forecasted for FY twenty-seven CIP is a little above what we expected. So in the immediate future, these projects are in as good a shape, I think, as anyone in our state is experiencing, but it is something we're concerned about.
Thank you all so much. Board members, do we have any additional questions? Okay. Seeing none. Thank you all so much. And we will move on to our next item for Dr. Coleman again, this time our transportation update.
Thank you again, Board Member. Our transportation team is continuing to implement our multi-year Transportation Improvement Action Plan. A key focus of this improvement effort is improving our ability to communicate in real time with parents and stakeholders. To that end, this evening, Director Kiba Baldwin will provide an update focused on our transition from the Stop Finder Parent App to Chipmunk, and also the larger transition from the Trans Finder Routing Platform into Bus Planner. Director Baldwin?
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Do I need to share my screen, or will someone post the presentation?
I believe we only have the PDF, so you may have to share your screen.
Okay.
Director, do you want me to pull it up so you can focus on? Okay, you have it.
I have it. Thank you, sir. Good evening, Chair Goins-McKens and members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to share the update about our Chipmunk rollout. Tonight, we're going to share updates dealing with our operational progress, the challenges and solutions, the student and community impact, as well as our community resources. Where we are right now, we've been able to implement a strategic phased rollout that has been successful for us, has allowed us to ensure quality and address issues in real time. To date, we've implemented eight of the twelve bus lots, and we are ahead of schedule by one full week. We have our final four bus lots that will deploy the week of October twentieth, ensuring one hundred percent implementation by the end of October. We've not had any major disruptions during this implementation, so things are working. Teams are learning how to use the software, and we are seeing those results. The operational progress side, we started the implementation of the Chipmunk app with the transition to our Bus Planner software, September second. And we are planning to be finished by October twenty-fourth with one hundred percent of our lots utilizing the Bus Planner software. And here, just the who's involved in this training, our routing teams, the bus lot office teams and drivers, our transportation supervisors, as well as our dispatch and our phone make teams. And for our parents, right now, the impact, we have three thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine of four thousand five hundred and seven students being transported and tracking within the Chipmunk app. Some of our challenges and solutions that we faced and we've been able to solve, we've had some indirect obstacles, but we're here to do what we said we were going to do. The implementation timeframe challenges have been a little hard, but we've been able to push through and meet and exceed our goals. The phased approach prioritizes our vulnerable students, and that's been well, that we've been able to ensure successful communication has been able to be shared with our families in question. And within our bus routes and our drivers, taking on the new expectation of utilizing the software and their impact has been very helpful as well. But transitioning to a new routing system and GPS system involves a lot of work. It's a lot of moving parts daily, and it's an ongoing, continuous improvement cycle where we are doing daily staff trainings. We are conducting little huddles just to evaluate each day's progress and trying to identify hurdles that we can fix in time that we have our major rollout with our comprehensive teams. The student and community impact, what we did to try to lessen the blow, we did do the before-school demo where we invited our board members, some of our executive cabinet. We invited some of the parents from our parent advisory groups to ride the bus and do a live demonstration on the bus and on the app where we can, we would drive the bus route and follow the path of the bus on the app and the phone, and that proved to be a very successful event. We had a lot of good questions. It posed some small risks that were noted by the parents that rode the bus that we've been able to adjust in the rollout, so that we've kind of solved those issues. But it turned out to be a very good productive session. We did that in the lower area, and we also did it in the friendly high school area. And we've gotten good feedback on, on this information and on the Chipmunk app in general. As a result, we've been able to build a communication plan that we think is pretty strong. We have a portal on the webpage, and on that webpage has all the Chipmunk information, including a video on how to operate the Chipmunk app in terms of how to download and what to look for. We have a user manual that you can download, so if parents want to be able to put some hands on it and see it and work through, that's available. We have our timeline that's on that web, on the web as well, as in terms of the dates of when we roll all of the routes out. And what I like new is that we have a chat box available just for the Chipmunk app. And so if parents are comfortable with that type of technology, it operates very similar to ChatGPT. They can just use it and type in any functions related to the app, and it will give them solutions. They've loaded the tutorial, the handbook, and everything associated with the app that is good knowledge for our parents. So we feel like we have a strong communication plan. We just need to continue to get parents pointed in the right direction to the resources here. And finally, where we are. We're working to put out a phase one family survey. We are interested to know how our families feel about the use of the app currently with the spit buses that we are operating. Phase two rollout will begin with our comprehensive routes. We will be publishing a new rollout timeline on our webpage pretty soon. The next phase with the comprehensive side, we're going to reduce the timeline and try to roll all the lots out in three distinct phases, which will be three distinct times. And right now, I'm pleased to tell you that we are looking to have everyone in before we go home on Christmas break. And so that's a tall task, and we're up to the challenge to meeting that. We're continuing to focus on the software and integration and accuracy. So that means the constant follow-through between the bus planner team, our transportation team, and our drivers to really pinpoint those cracks that we see in the system and how do we can fix them and keep running. And so those are our next steps, and at this time, I will open it up for any questions that you may have.
Thank you so much, Director Baldwin. Board members, do we have any questions?
Okay.
Okay, so I don't see any hands, so I will start with mine. I think the main one that I have in terms of this timeline, and I'm really excited about is having everyone on the platform by the time we get to winter break. I also see final four lots deployed by October twentieth. So, and you said that there were some, a phase rollout and all that kind of stuff. Could you speak a little bit more to that? Like, what are we, what are we specifically asking our parents to do? And then I see the communication resource and all that thing for all of those for us to support. So what are we asking parents to do and at what time?
So right now, the last four rollouts of bus lots we're here. So these are our special needs runs. These are our letters. So we will have our Goddard, Forestville, our Bladensburg, and our John Hanson Bus Lot rollout on October twentieth. We will send an email, kind of like a pre, pre informational email to those parents to say, be on the lookout. If you've not already downloaded the Chipmunk app, please do so. In that message, there's a link for them to visit their, their Play Store, Apple Play Store, or Google Play Store to download the app and includes instructions on, on downloading and accessing. And so we will then send them a follow-up message twenty-four hours before we actually go live. For parents to say, get ready, on this day, we're live. And we start. So just for, for those parents, just to download the app and ready to go.
And is that the part that's phased, or what is the?
Yes.
If I could just add, so the challenge that our families that we've placed them in is that most of our families are in Stop Finder to start the school year, but we are transitioning into Chipmunk on a phased rollout, by lot, by types of routes. So beginning November and through the end of December, we're now going to be moving our comprehensive families all into the Chipmunk app. And so we need families to really pay attention to when they're migrating, their trips are migrating out of Stop Finder and into Chipmunk, downloading the app and being ready to utilize that tool.
Absolutely. So with that, can we just make sure that we, as board members, have the information so that we're helping you all with parents ask us and all of that? I can already gotten some questions, but I can only imagine if a parent misses an email and just how much that can be please let us know how we can support as board members.
Absolutely. Definitely share some information with you to put, to share with your constituents. Yes.
Thank you. Board members, do we have any additional questions before we move on? Okay, thank you so much, Dr. Coleman and Director Baldwin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we move on to the next part of our agenda, I just want to make, take this time to make sure that we introduce to the public our new board financial analyst, Ms. Conley. You've already heard her take the role in all of those things, but I want to make sure that we are formally introducing her to our public in this meeting, since this is her first meeting with us. Ms. Conley, would you like to say hi so that people can see your, your name is not on, on the screen?
I'm sorry. Yes, hi, everyone. My name is Kristen Conley. Yes, I am new to PG CPS Board of Education. I'm glad to be here and to meet all of you. Yes, this is my first meeting, my first committee meeting, but yes, nice to meet you all.
Thank you so much, Ms. Conley, and thank you so much, everyone, for indulging us in that little bit of privilege to meet one of the staff members that supports this committee. And so at this point, we'll move on to our enterprise resource planning procurement process. And the chair recognizes Chief Howell for the ERP procurement process presentation.
Thank you. I'm actually going to hand it over to our wonderful Chief of Technology, who will talk about the new enterprise resource planning tool that we are looking to upgrade to, hopefully in the next fiscal year. So to walk us through the whole process and the timeline, I will turn it over to Dr. Zuckerman. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Nice to see you tonight. Ms. Conley, welcome. Thanks for all your help today. It was great working with you. So I'm just going to do a very brief presentation, just to level set around where we are. And then board members, feel free to ask questions. So I will, guess I need to share my screen. When you first do that. So hopefully everyone can see it. Good. Okay. So our Enterprise Resource Planning Modernization Initiative, ERP, for short, that's fancy IT language for a new business information system. In our situation, it's going to be a new Oracle system. ERPs are complex, massive business information systems that manage everything from payroll to purchasing, to budget, to benefits, to human capital, HR information systems. And so this is not a small project. It's a multi-year, multimillion-dollar project. And our current system is twenty-three years old, about twenty-three years old. We started using Oracle. We were the first school district in the region to use Oracle. And our last upgrade was in twenty twenty-one. And those are, we've done little upgrades along the way to maintain support, security updates. The current version we're in is reaching its end of useful life, meaning that it's going to, we're going to run out of support in this version. Oracle is migrating every customer over to their cloud version. Originally, that support was going to be end-dated in twenty thirty-one, which is why we started this project when we did. They've, they've actually extended that by a few years at the request of customers to give people more time to move to the cloud version, but we feel like we need to do it now anyway, because we're just seeing performance issues. When you have a technology tool that's aging, you start to, you just see performance issues, just lag time, which we've all experienced. So it's, it's time to upgrade. There's three pillars to our system. As I mentioned, we've got human capital management and payroll and one, financials, which is submitting requisitions, high expense, purchasing, accounting, and then pillar three is budget. And so, as I mentioned, we were one of the first to move to Oracle in the area. We're truly in the vanguard of this, of this technology, and now we're, we're lagging behind in terms of, we are one of the, the last districts to make the move to the cloud. And moving to the cloud will help us with productivity, efficiency, effectiveness, is just be a much faster and higher performing system. So where are we in the process? We released an RFP to help implement this transition in July. We realized after about six weeks of fielding questions and having vendor panels that the RFP was a little too broad, and we needed to narrow it to clarify for the implementers that we are transitioning from the version of Oracle we're on to the cloud version, and that will help shape who will apply to be our implementer. A project of this size, we, we, nobody does it on their own. You hire an implementer that's got experience in doing this major upgrade. And so we needed to narrow the, the scope of our RFP and repost it, which our target date was today. And I'm pleased to say we actually, we did get it posted. It's out on the street as recently as just within the last hour or two. And so we will go through the vendor selection process over the next six to eight weeks. Ideally, we will have a vendor selected, and we can kick the project off in earnest in January or February. So we're a little few months behind where we want to be. Just in terms of the selection of the vendor, the consultant who will help us do this project. And if all goes according to plan, these are just general timeframes here. Again, this is a multi-year project. So we're looking at about a, we need to adjust this timeframe a little bit by a few. So the start instead of September, well, the start would be September of twenty-six would be when we start migrating data over. We would take January of twenty-six up to September of twenty-six for pillar one to do our requirement setting, our, our work with our subject matter experts across the system, our process design work, and then begin the data migration process and testing. And that altogether is about eighteen months. We think we can do that concurrently with finance and procurement. And then later in the project, in the middle of twenty-seven, we would start introducing And then later in the project, in the middle of twenty seven, we would start introducing the budget piece of this. These are all just high level um frames uh of the time. We'd have to, once we get our implementer, we'll really narrow down the timeframe. Um, but uh we're generally looking at uh a January launch date. Uh, if all goes according to plan, January, February, and then probably three to four years after that, when the entire project is done. Um, and with that, I will stop sharing and open it up for questions or comments and see um if I can answer.
Thank you, Dr. Zuckerman. Uh, board members, do we have any questions? Okay, seeing no hands, I will ask mine. Can you walk us through a little bit as to, I guess, number one, why the implementation timeline is so long? And then why the stagger? Cause twenty twenty eight, especially for a system that we were told is in dire need of improvement, seems like a long time.
Yeah, there's a huge amount of risk involved in transitioning to a new ERP system. Um, any school district that has gone through at any organization, um there's a significant amount of testing of the data integration. So that's the key piece. So number one, it takes a long time to write the processes and the workflows that we want. So we have an opportunity, it's like building a house, right? Where we have the opportunity to design it the way we want it. Um, and so part of this is the design phase. How do we want the workflow to go from one department to another, which approver versus that approver? So there's a lot of design that we lay out on paper, then we set it up in the system and then we have to test it. And um i- i- and so there's just an incredible amount of risk associated with it. Uh, to put it in perspective, the student information system uh we did from School Maxx Synergy, we did it in ten months. Most districts, it's an eighteen month to twenty four month process. We were really up against the clock, um and we pressed the vendor and we worked hard to get it in ten months. Um, and that's the fastest they've ever done. So it's 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 the the reason is for just the data testing. You don't want to get the data transfer wrong, especially when we're talking about payroll. Um, then there's just the scope of it. It's so massive and it touches so many different parts of the organization. There's only so much bandwidth that a consultant or an organization has to do each pillar thoughtfully um at one time. And so that's why typically these are three to five year projects um for every organization, especially one of our size. Um, and so it's really just in the the testing and making sure that everything is right uh so that everyone gets paid when we go live um the first time.
Thank you so much, Dr. Zuckerman. Um, vice Chair Brown?
Yes, thank you so much for the presentation. I think my only question, and I guess this if you can kind of give clarity as far as how was the implementation process like picked? How would, how did we know, okay, HR was gonna go first, then budget was gonna go last? Like, where did that idea, was there a criteria that we followed? Like, they, HR really needs it? We, what was it exactly that you all, um, how you all prioritized it?
Right. So um first, I just want to clarify that this is just an estimated timetable. And when we get the implementer who does Oracle Cloud implementation, when we hire that, when we select that vendor, um and they get onsite and they look under the hood and talk to all of our our different departments and our teams, they may actually come back and tell us, you know, we think you should do budget first. They they may. So typically, typically you start with payroll and the human capital data, because everything sort of, that's the nerve center of the system, and then everything builds off of that. So you typically start with that, because that's the the critical data that feeds everywhere else. It feeds to benefits, it feeds uh, so bud- budget is a little bit different. It's a bit more of a standalone. Um, and so uh your budget is usually what you do last. It's quite frankly, the easiest one um to do, because it's more of a standalone module. So um but there you it, there's no, you could do it the other way around and we will wait to engage with our implementer um around that. Uh, but based on just what our experience in the past, what we've seen from other school districts, this is the typical path forward.
Thank you.
Board members, do we have any additional questions? Okay, seeing none, I do have one additional question, and I know that this is for Dr. Zuckerman or Chief Howell. So, or if it's a combination of the two. So what is the contingency plan? Because I know in our last work session, we talked a lot about blueprint, the implications for our budget. So how is it that we are going to not just get through this budget season, but also next year's budget season, anticipating the regulatory requirements of blueprint to go into further effect between now and when we will have possibly have this system fully up and running?
Yeah, we're we're gonna continue doing what we currently do. Um, we're not in so we're not in dire shape. We'd be in dire shape if we were out of support for Oracle. And so that that would be dire shape. Um, but we have to back map from when that support is going to end. And so if it's gonna end in twenty thirty one, we didn't want to go right up to twenty thirty one by moving to to the cloud. Um, so given that it could be a three to five year uh implementation timeline, it makes sense to start in twenty five, twenty six. With respect to blueprint, um I, you know, what I can say is, I just want to put it in perspective. I spent seven years in Montgomery County Public Schools. I left Prince George's and went there in twenty thirteen. And when I went there in twenty thirteen, um there were paper timesheets. It was paper purchasing processes. And Montgomery County just flipped the switch this past summer on their Oracle Cloud payroll in twenty twenty five. So they started their Oracle project in twenty twenty one, cause I left in twenty twenty to come back. And so um lots of school districts are still in a paper-based process or transitioning, and that doesn't, it makes things more complicated for blueprint. It makes things more complicated for reporting, but it's not impossible. And so um our system is solid. The performance is beginning to lag for sure. Um, so um it, we can be more efficient. Uh, but it just means it creates inefficiencies in things like blueprint, in in all, it just, it's just more inefficient. So this is gonna help us become more efficient, but it's not a showstopper for us in terms of doing our work. Um, and uh so it's just part of the evolution of technology and modernization.
Yeah, and I'll just add to that. I mean, knowing where we are with the early phase of implementation for blueprint, we know that it's the work that we have started will have to continue within the existing system that we have right now. And so the team has been working closely. Our two teams, the budget, accounting, and IT teams have been working very closely together to work towards changes that we're gonna be making now within our existing Oracle system to support some of the requirements for blueprint. So as Dr. Zuckman said, the work is going to continue. It will be painful. Um, it will not be the most efficient, but we're gonna do what we need to do in order to um be in compliance with what we have to do prior to getting into a new system.
Thank you so much. I have some concerns and I'll follow up with you directly only because of my understanding of how dire the situation we had was. But I sincerely appreciate both of you all explaining that we will still be able to continue, even if we don't have that new system um up and running ASAP. Um, if there are no further questions from my colleagues, we will move on to the budget calendar update with Chief Howell.
Good afternoon again. Um, so I am going to turn it over to Director Siobhan Smith, who will give us an overview, more of a broad overview of kind of our focus for the next couple of months and some of the challenges that we'll have as we are beginning to plan for fiscal year twenty twenty seven.
Good evening. As Chief Howell mentioned, my name is Siobhan Smith, Director of Budget and Management Services. And I'm just gonna kind of walk you through very quickly um my screen. Okay, can everybody see my screen? I apologize. I can't really see you guys, so. Yes. Thank you. So last month, we kind of walked through a high level timeline. Um, and so this month, we just wanted to kind of walk you through um some of the key engagements and some of some of the challenges that we're seeing, um just to frame where we think we're gonna be regarding fiscal year twenty seven. Um, now, please keep in mind, this is very, very early. We have, we do not yet have final enrollment counts. We don't, I mean, there's a lot of assumptions, um but I just wanted to give you um or frame for you the fiscal reality that we're seeing as of today. Okay? So with that being said, our initial projections, based again on very high level assumptions, are showing that our costs or expenditures are increasing um over six and a half percent from twenty six to twenty seven. Um, which is rapidly outpacing the projected revenue growth of less than five percent. We're anticipating on or around maybe four point five percent revenue growth. Um, and the reason for this outpacing um is due to relatively flat enrollment. We've talked about this before. Um, the good thing is that we're not seeing negative enrollment trends enough to cause alarm, but we're also not seeing huge upswings um that would generate a lot more revenue. Um, in addition, as as we we've talked about also before, blueprint has prescribed per pupil amounts um by statute or program, um funding program. Um, and though those per pupil amounts are increasing some, are increasing, they're not increasing significantly. So we're talking about minimal increasing of per pupil amounts for each blueprint statute. Um, but yet what we are seeing a significant increase is salaries. Um, we made massive investments into the employees of Prince George's County Public Schools um due to negotiated agreements. And so our people costs, our salary costs are have gone up quite a bit that we have to, once again, sustain, and it's going to go up even more in fiscal year twenty seven. And then, of course, there's continued uncertainty around federal funded program, but that's going to be a dark cloud over our heads for a while, where we just don't know for sure what's gonna happen with our federally funded programs. We also don't, and because of that, there's always going to be a room of, ooh, what may have to shift over to our general fund versus what is currently funding by our federal grants. Um, so with that being said, again, just a just a framing, we do not anticipate new investments for FY twenty seven. And what I mean by that is there's not new monies to do new things with. Instead, it will be a realignment. We will reallocate our funds based off of key priorities. Dr. Joseph has outlined um some key priorities for us. Um, and so as we are looking to do something different um in fiscal year twenty seven, it will have to be based off of reallocated dollars. How we're gonna find those cost savings, it will have to be through um recommended strategic reductions or what I call divestments, and whether it's an underperforming program, um we have been the district um really has to start looking at our programs and really figuring out if there is a significant enough return on investment um versus the initial investment that we're making. Um, long-term vacancies, unfortunately, we do have some hard to fill vacancies. And so those vacant positions that remain vacant, that we just can't seem to fill, I think we need to face reality and go ahead and uh reduce those positions um instead of carrying those costs in our budgets. Um, and then also just monitoring some underspending. There's trends where we seem to consistently underspend in certain areas. Okay, well, we can start, instead of carrying that underspending over and over and over in our base budget, let's realign um and reallocate based again off of high priorities. Um, and then the last thing that I just want to mention, and we kind of talked about it a little bit last month, but I want to we definitely want to have a high level of stakeholder engagement, which means that we want engagement and touchpoints with key stakeholders across the district, across our communities, early and often throughout the budget process, particularly throughout the months of November, December, um to align around our budget priorities and considerations. Um, it is really, really important for us to ensure that, one, the board has a a key understanding of what's in the budget, what changes we're making. Um, e- especially when it comes to alignment with strategic priorities. Um, but it's also important to make sure that our communities understand what's going on, particularly when it comes to blueprint, which is very difficult to just comprehend when people are just talking to you. So we gotta make sure that we're getting not just messaging out, but information out um in a way that is understandable by everybody. Um, so I mean, that's our call to action, that's our challenge, um but we definitely want to make sure um and specifically through this committee, I think it's really important. Um, and then figure out how we can engage the full board as well. Um, and so definitely seek your feedback, um any suggestions you may have, recommendations you may have on the best way to do that. Um, but I just want to make sure that you are aware that that is our goal. Um, and that there will be invitations coming out for you, for um board members to join and participate in certain things. Um, the timing of it, how we're gonna do it, it's not fully clear. Um, but we definitely want to make sure that there's engagement. So with that being said, I'll stop and take any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, uh Chief Howell and Director Smith. Vice Chair Brown?
Yes, thank you so much, Chair Coines McCants. Um, thank you so much for the presentation. I did have a quick question for Director Smith. You did mention the positions that were hard to fill. Um, can you kind of elaborate on that? Is it, like, what positions are these? Why haven't they been filled? Is there something we need to implement when it comes to making changes on how we recruit for HR? Like, I'm I'm trying to understand exactly why those positions were hard. That's the first one. The second one is, um, I guess with, let's say hypothetically speaking, we eliminate those positions. Does that put money back into the budget for us to be able to allocate it somewhere else?
Yeah, so thank you so much for that question by Chair Brown. And I think that's part of the research and the discovery that we really need to do. Um, and of course, when I say we, it cannot just be the budget office in the vacuum. It really needs to engage all of our offices, our chiefs, our directors, to really understand why we continue to carry certain positions. Um, I'm, I don't know yet, like, which positions. We really need to do a deep dive to see, okay, well, how many positions have just remained vacant over the past three years um that we've had to do without, and what has been those hardships, so that we can develop recommendations that we can bring forth to both the administration and the board um for better understanding. Um, but yes, if we are able to reduce positions that does allow us to have, it does free up funding that we can then reallocate without having to use salary lapse, that we can fully allocate elsewhere um depending on what those priorities need to be. Um, so I just think that that work really needs to happen, um especially in a physically constrained time that we are facing right now.
Yeah, and just to add to that, I mean, when it comes to, when you think about our overall budget, our people costs, our position costs, that is the largest portion of our budget. And so it's always a part of our process every single year and throughout the year to constantly reevaluate the position, the the positions that we have and reprioritize and to ensure that what the critical roles that we need to have are the ones that we're focusing on. Uh, we have made some very intentional decisions over the last couple of years. Um, as you're aware, where we have had hiring freezes or we've had a hiring pause. Um, and in some cases, those delays have been really painful, but in other cases, it also has given us an opportunity to reevaluate the positions that we planned for, that we didn't fill for that reason. Um, but whether or not there's another way to possibly accomplish the work in a different capacity. So it's just the ongoing process of reevaluating, reevaluating our position costs um as we're planning to prepare for the coming year.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, board members, do we have any additional questions? Seeing no hands. I will try to keep my question brief and shorten it as much as possible. In the, I guess, gap between our projected over to the budget and how much we're thinking we are gonna get, I know you identified some ways. What else? I guess in terms of support from us, do we need to kind of narrow that gap? Or is that something that is just like a part of the ongoing process of figuring out how that would work out?
I think an important part of this process for us, um, you know, as a district, is just the alignment around our priorities. The priorities then help to drive the resource allocation decisions. And so I know we're going through a process now of, you know, receiving the community survey, the input of that. Um, uh, Dr. Joseph has had several listening sessions since the beginning of the fiscal year, in person, virtual, hearing a lot of feedback from the community in that form as well. Um, I know board members also have, have, have had the opportunity to engage with administration as well around priorities. So it's just really pulling all of that information together and having alignment around the focus areas and the priorities. And then that will help frame and guide our decisions around resource allocations and reallocations to ensure that we stay within a balanced budget, because we obviously can't do everything, but it should be aligned with our priorities.
Thank you so much. Um, seeing no further questions. Um, the chair would like to invite members of the public, as, uh, Chief Howell said, to provide feedback on our school year, our next school year, twenty twenty-seven budget priority survey. Um, it is open. It is running. Your input is clearly incredibly important and valuable to helping us shape our budget decisions and making sure that it reflects the needs and priorities of our community. Uh, if you would like to participate in this survey, we've got a QR code on the screen. You can also find the link on our Board of Education webpage. Our next virtual Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee meeting will be on November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. Please continue to check our Prince George's County Board of Education website for information and updates as they occur. Uh, thank you all so much for being in attendance tonight and answering all of our questions. Uh, to our viewers, thank you for watching, and there being no further business. The time is now six twenty-five PM. And the October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee meeting is adjourned.